Welcome everyone to the Special Board of Education meeting for March 25th, 2020. The time is 6:30 PM. I ask, before we start, I ask all everyone out there participating to mute your microphones unless you are invited to speak or speaking. We've already done the sound check. When it comes time for board members to ask questions, I will, you know, ask the individual board members so that we don't step on each other. May I, we've called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please, Donna? Dave, can you repeat that, you're present?
Present.
Graham?
Graham, present. Dave, John Koster?
John, present.
Rick Van Wieren?
Van Wieren, present.
I'm going to stand up here since I've got the flag, I'm going to do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, it's the patriot in me, not really sorry. Okay, so, may I have approval of agenda? A motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? May I have a roll call?
Butcher, aye.
Cruzen, aye.
Costa?
Graham, aye.
Costa?
Rick, for a vote?
Wieren, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We have had no emails or other contact for open forum, so I'm going to skip that. We are on to action items. Policy BEAA, electronic participation in school board meetings, may I have a motion, please?
I move to temporarily approve revisions to policy BEAA, electronic participation in school board meetings to align with revisions to state statutes.
Second? I do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have a motion, please. May I have a vote?
Butcher, aye.
Cruzen, aye.
Cruzen, aye.
Graham, aye.
Costa, aye.
Rick, for a vote?
Wieren, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We have had no emails or other contact for open forum, so I'm going to skip that. We are on to action items. Policy BEAA, electronic participation in school board meetings, may I have a motion, please?
I move to temporarily approve revisions to policy BEAA, electronic participation in school board meetings to align with revisions to state statutes.
Second? I do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I did attend a CASB webinar today, and they said that the change to electronic meetings is actually permanent from the state. So we can address that later, but I thought everyone should know, they told me that just about an hour and a half ago. May I have a vote?
Butcher, aye.
Cruzen, aye.
Cruzen, aye.
Graham, aye.
Costa?
Aye.
Van Wieren?
Aye, Van Wieren, aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We are now for a motion for adjournment of our special board meeting.
I move to adjourn?
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And a vote, please.
Butcher? Butcher?
Butcher, aye.
Cruzen, aye.
Graham, aye.
Costa, aye.
Van Wieren, aye.
And the motion passes. We are adjourned at 6:35. Now, if everyone stays on, we're going to change some tapes and press some other buttons. Just bear with us and we'll start the next meeting. Okay, the work session is in session at 6:36 PM. We'll start with job title and description update, 49 Pathways Specialist, Ms. Perez.
Yes, thank you. This is Mary Perez, D-49 Director of Applied and Advanced Learning. This evening I have two items on the list, the first being the, an update, presenting you an update for the position of 49 Pathways Specialist, updating the title to Applied and Advanced Learning Specialist, along with some other additional duties that are now new due to the reorganization of the CTE Work-Based Learning and Concurrent Enrollment Departments into one department. We are also asking to move that position from a .5 FTE to a 1.0 FTE. I'm not sure if that's doable, given the circumstances with the budget, so just presenting that to you. Do you have any questions that I can answer at this time?
We'll start in order with Mr. Butcher. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Cruzen?
No, I don't.
I as well do not have any questions. Mr. Koster?
The only thing is, do we have to address her comment about the FTE?
In what way would you like it addressed? It's, I think they originally put in for a .5 and then they're saying they're going to need a .1, Ms. Perez, is that correct?
This position has been a .5 for four years, and the concurrent enrollment program has grown from a little under 200 students to now pushing 700 students. We've added two new departments, including Work-Based Learning, and we are unable to keep up with the workload, and...
It seemed like you put that question on us, like we had to take an action, John. That's all I was...
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, it wasn't just simply a job description update, but there was some money involved, approximately $22,000, including benefits, taking this position from a .5 to a 1.0.
Okay, and that is part of the update then? And so, are there any additional questions, Mr. Van Wieren?
I had a question in reviewing the content here. It refers to this having been restructured at one point, eliminating two FTE, and then we have this position that's been there at half, and now we're going to one. Is this just, we cut back too far and we're coming back from where we were, or is this truly an increase in expenditure?
So, Rick, I have to, I have to speak to that because I led both of the positions. Essentially what happened was, we used to have two directors in this area, and when the previous director of CTE, who was named Nikki Lester, when she resigned and left the district, we did not backfill her position. We consolidated the director of concurrent enrollment and the director of career technical education into a single director position. And then, when, when we formed the alliance with the Pike's Peak Business Education Alliance, PPBEA, an individual who was formerly employed as our director of, or our coordinator, excuse me, of Work-Based Learning, a gentleman named Bob Gemignani, moved over to that organization, so his salary moved over to that organization, and we realized the net savings out of that transition. We still have a contract cost with the PPBEA, but it is about 50, probably about 60% of the salary and benefits package that we were previously paying. So, I don't think it's a case of us having cut back too far, I think it's a case of us having optimized the configuration, and now we're growing at the right place, we're growing at the support level rather than at the director level.
I have no more questions.
Thank you, Peter. Shall I move on to the next item?
John, do you want statements to move it forward? Pressing the wrong button. Yes, may I get verbiage to move this forward? Kevin? Kevin Butcher?
Yes.
Dave Cruzen?
Yes.
I agree as well. Mr. Koster?
Yes.
And Mr. Van Wieren?
Yes.
Okay, so we will move this forward to the next regular session, and Ms. Perez, can you go over the BOE Policy Revision IKCA weighted grading, please?
Yes, sir. This policy addresses an opportunity to expand equity for all high school students that are earning weighted credit for mastery demonstrations, specifically for our CTE students that are choosing career pathways that require professional industrial certifications to enter the workforce. A lot of those certifications, they are earning through our CTE courses, as well as, in addition to the work-based learning provided through internships and pre-apprenticeships. Also, some of these students are earning these professional national industry certificates through courses and sequences of courses through Pike's Peak Community College. The list that I describe in the description of this line item is, this list of credentials or industry certificates is maintained by the Colorado Department of Education. It is, it is updated every year, and so if our students do earn these authorized certificates, not only do we receive incentives for doing so, but those students become career-ready. And so, given that, we feel it's important for those students to bring copies of those certificates to us, which they do anyway, and then to weight the course that they took on our high school campuses from a 4.0 GPA to a 5.0 GPA, thus expanding equity for the weighted grading. And this is very similar to a process that we already do for students that take Career in Tech Ed courses in our high schools that are articulated with Pike's Peak Community College, and when they complete those courses with an A or B, they can apply for college credit. When they receive that college credit, they bring their college transcript back to our high school registrars, and again, they receive a 5.0 weighted grade for an A, 4.0 weighted grade for a B. So it's a similar process, but as we're expanding into the industrial certification realm now for mastery demonstrations, we wanted to align this policy and expand it. May I entertain any questions?
Kevin, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, and if nobody else does, I would propose we move this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzen. No further questions, same with Kevin, move it forward. Okay, on the same way, Mr. Koster?
On the same way, moving forward.
And Mr. Van Wieren?
I'm good, moving forward.
Okay, we'll move that forward to the April 19th meeting.
Thank you.
We are on to, thank you, Ms. Perez, good job. We are on to revised job descriptions for school nurse, school psychologist, and board certified behavior analyst. Ms. Lamond, are you on?
Dr. Nancy Lamond, Executive Director for Individualized Education. Two of the job descriptions, the school psychologist and the school nurse, are revisions that should have probably been done years ago. They're just bringing them into the current marketplace, the current requirements for the position, just updating as they are both 10 years old. The BCBA is a little bit different as we now have a licensure process through Colorado Department of Ed. Prior to this year, BCBA's did not require any kind of a license. This year, now, CDE has a process for an adjunct licensure, and so again, updating that to make sure that applicants understand they have to be able to obtain the adjunct licensure through CDE. So, a few minor updates and one semi-major update for these three job descriptions. Any questions?
Thank you. My one question is, if they have to be licensed now by CDE, that does that increase the pay range or scale?
It does not. We have had a BCBA on payroll for the last couple of years. CDE allowed a BCBA to be licensed by having a special education teacher license or one of the SSP license, and so now they are having to, now they are doing their own through the adjunct instead of kind of piggybacking off of licensures that are meant for other specific positions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Butcher, you have anything to add?
I have no further questions. I would propose we move all the issues forward.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzen?
Same for me, thank you.
Okay, I move it forward as well, all three issues. Mr. Koster?
No questions, moving forward.
Mr. Van Wieren?
No questions, moving forward.
Okay, we're going to move that forward to our next meeting on April 9th. And now we're on to new job proposal, Behavior Support Assistant, Mr. Pickering. I can hold up a picture of Dr. Pickering, he's actually not able to join us remotely, and I had previously approved some time away, and I am going to take on this description for him. This is a new position, but it's actually a cost savings because we consolidated other positions to create this behavioral support, this behavioral support position. This will be an individual who will have training that will enable them to support...
Sorry, I still need you to state your name for the record, because this will be just an audio thing.
Gotcha. So this is Peter Hiltz, Chief Education Officer. I supervise Dr. Mike Pickering, and I am speaking on his behalf for the Behavior Support Assistant. So this position will provide support for students who are displaying disruptive and harmful behaviors. This is related to our 2020 strategic priority, the number one strategic priority that we approved at the last board regular meeting. This position will support both students in general education settings, as well as special education settings, and, and all students of all classifications in either setting. So, we consider that this is an innovation. The Zone had worked on a position like this to identify how this might support, how it might support the principals, and so you'll see in the mini-org chart on the position description, this individual will report directly to the building principal, and this individual will support the whole classroom program. It may mean that this ends up becoming one of our strategic responses to this strategic challenge that we face. Okay, thank you. And this will be for the whole Zone or a particular school? This will be a school-specific position, but it's being funded at the Zone level, and although we are appropriately, we're appropriately considering whether or not we should, we should add new positions, this, although it is a new position, it's actually a position for which the resource is available because we consolidated other positions. So Dr. Pickering did a good job of washing this through the business office and working with Ron Sprints to make sure that this was a valid and legitimate request at this point in time. Thank you. Do we have any questions from Mr. Butcher?
I don't have any questions. I do like this position, I think it's a good idea, look forward to seeing how it moves forward.
Move it forward. Okay, Mr. Cruzen said move it forward. I as well would like to see it move forward. Mr. Koster?
Yeah, it's just a question though, so if this is just for one school, is this going to be a pattern where we'll be hiring this type of position at many schools?
If this is an effective response to the strategic challenge of harmful and disruptive behaviors, then, then I would expect us to scale this. You would probably see it at other schools, perhaps in other Zones, and that is our pattern in the district. We pilot things, that's part of our innovation phase. We pilot them either for a limited time or in a limited location, this is a limited location position, and then if we see a positive return on the investment or desired outcome or performance, then we might scale up or might scale out, and that's, that's the way we innovate, we innovate and scale.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward.
Mr. Van Wieren?
I had questions similar to John's, but I, one of the, an add-on question I would have is, are we going to get an update periodically as to the effectiveness of this, so that we kind of have a little warning if we are going to end up scaling this up? Because this looks like something that could be a lot of positions if we have to scale it up.
So if we came to you with a request to, let's say, add a second within the Zone, or if we came to you with a request to add a dozen across the district, we probably wouldn't do that, but we would, we would provide you some data as part of that request and, and recommendation, we would obviously have a budgeting and staffing model for that, but we would also be able to demonstrate that there were some, and you can see some of the, the things that we think are going to happen, we think we're going to have increased ability to respond, to preempt, to, to restore after incidents, and so we'd be able to give you some data, yes.
Super, I have no more questions, you can, I'm, I would also agree to move it forward.
Thank you. Thank you all. We will move that forward to the April 9th meeting, and we are now on to job description, Senior Accountant, Mr. Sprints?
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprints, Director of Finance. I'm putting forward today a job description for a senior accountant. If you remember, back in December, I had put forth a job description for an accounting II position. We have had a couple of, of very good candidates for that role, both, both those candidates have turned it down due to, to lack of pay. So I'm putting this, this position forth, this is a senior accountant at a range three. I believe it's about 8K higher than the current accounting II role. So my, my plan is that I won't hire both an accounting II and senior accountant, it would be one or the either. After we get through our E work process, my, my goal is to resubmit this accounting II position, see if, if we have some more candidates that are willing to take this at a range two, but if we don't receive any, any qualified candidates, I would like to then push out this senior accountant at a range three. So I have any questions?
Mr. Butcher, any questions?
No, just a comment, it's a competitive marketplace, so appreciate your need to ask, appreciate your willingness to try to fill the position at a two still, so I would like to move this forward.
I also appreciate, sorry, I also appreciate the flexibility, Ron, in terms of looking at how we could adjust this, especially when the candidates just aren't working for what we're anticipating, so I appreciate that, so yes, please move it forward.
Mr. Koster?
Moving forward, thanks.
Mr. Van Wieren?
No questions, moving forward.
And I said move it forward as well, so we're going to move that one forward, and it's going to be on the April 9th meeting. We are now on to Guest Teacher Program update, Mr. Anderson, and then he'll bounce into the Human Resources Staffing Proposal as well. Go ahead, Stan.
Thank you very much. I am switching to my, I'm going to display here for you. that I provided for the Board regarding our work with the guest teacher workforce, and that our work, our strategy around the guest teacher workforce has really been to address what is a, one of our top workforce challenges, or has been over the last, well, quite a few years. So, so as we, we walk through this tonight, I'm going to begin by just giving, providing overview of what is the guest teacher workforce segment, for anybody who may be new to this, why, why, I'll start with why it exists. You know, guest teachers, or as we used to more commonly refer to them as substitutes and subs, we've really moved to calling, referring to these as guest teachers. They are here to, to serve in place of the regular classroom teachers, they provide, you know, relief to teachers when they need to be out for various things, they're there to deliver instruction, and, and they, they work oftentimes as a part of the team in the school, and they really are essential to, to our work, to our vision and mission, to be the best choice to learn. A snapshot of the, this workforce segment, it's, it's roughly, and the guest teachers portion of our, our substitute workforce is over 400 individuals. This year so far, about three-fourths of those have worked at least one sub-job this year. You can see there, their, their length of service, you know, many are pretty new this year. There are a number though that are, have been with us for several years, and we would consider more seasoned guest teachers. I'll explain a little bit about our, our pay system in a bit here, but you can see the distribution there of our, the way that we're paying teachers. Those, those that are at the $150 a day tier, what that means is 25% of our active subs are, have, have worked 90-plus days in, in the last, you could say, calendar year. So, so there are a good number of them who are, who are quite active, and more that we would probably like to see more active than they currently are. This is a overview of how we pay our, our guest teachers. We have three levels of pay, our entry level is $100, going up to $150, or day, for our day rates, meaning a day-to-day sub, that could be one day or five days, they'll be in the, in that, in that, those pay ranges. We separately have long-term assignments, where we'll, someone will commit to 21 or more days, and they'll be paid a little bit differently because of that commitment to that assignment. I'm showing a snapshot of how we compare, on the, on the table on the right, just how we compare, how our rates compare to the other districts in the area, and, you know, not, not unlike our other workforce segments, we, we're coming in lower than, than the others, but, but before you think we need to address pay, let me get to, through my presentation, and you'll see that we're actually doing quite well in terms of filling vacancies when we need to, so, so stay tuned for a little bit more information. About two years ago, we developed a strategy where we, knowing that we needed to address both the supply and the quality of guest teachers, developed a set of strategies to, to improve in these areas. The first being to pursue a waiver for guest teacher licensure. We successfully achieved that, and, and we've been able then to, we've hired 90 teachers to date, guest teachers. This is a, uh, overview of, of how we pay our, our guest teachers. Um, we have three levels of pay. Our, our entry level is a hundred dollars going up to a hundred and fifty dollars. For day, for our day rates, meaning a day-to-day sub, that could be one day or five days, they'll be in the, in that, uh, in that, those pay ranges. We separately have, uh, long-term assignments, um, where we'll, someone will commit to, uh, twenty, twenty-one or more days and they'll be paid a little bit differently. Be- because of that commitment to that assignment. I'm showing a snapshot of how we compare on, on the, on the table on the right, um, just how we compare, how our, our rates compare to, uh, the other districts in the area. And, um, you know, not, not unlike our other workforce segments, we, uh, we're, we're coming in lower than, uh, than the others. But, um, but, uh, before you, uh, think we need to address pay, let me get to, through my presentation and you'll see that we're actually doing quite well in terms of, um, of, uh, filling, uh, vacancies when, when we need to. So, um, so stay tuned for a little bit more information. About two years ago, we developed a strategy where we, knowing that we needed to address, um, uh, both the supply and the quality of guest teachers, developed, um, a set of strategies to, uh, to improve in these areas. The first being to pursue a, a waiver for guest teacher licensure. Uh, we successfully, uh, achieved that and, uh, and we've been able then to, we've hired, um, ninety teachers to date, guest teachers, uh, under that waiver. Uh, because of that waiver, we're able to, um, to bring people on with a bachelor's degree. They don't have to have that licensure as long as we, uh, per, commit to providing training, uh, to those guest teachers. Uh, the second, second supply strategy, so we're looking at the top, um, it is, has been about, uh, partnering with a, with a third, third-party supplier of guest teachers. So that's, that's an organization called Tag Education. I'm gonna spend the most of my time talking about Tag and how that, um, how that relationship is going so far. We did some adjustment to the compensation structure. While we still show that we're lagging behind in terms of how we pay teachers, we did make some movement in the compensation structure, uh, that's, has seemed to work favorably. In the lower portion, we're talking, we, we have a quality strat, three different quality strategies. The first, first one being around training and recognizing guest teachers who develop their skills. And so that, that one is in place. The second and third strategies are, uh, future work. So I'm gonna spend some time now talking about Tag Education. So, so Tag is a software platform. Um, it, it is designed specifically to, to, um, source guest teachers. And so Tag Education goes and finds people who want to guess, to be substitute or guest teachers. And they, they hire people who don't have, um, uh, who, who aren't licensed as substitutes, that have a bachelor's degree or higher. Uh, and then they, they train them, uh, onboard them and then they, they, um, through this platform, um, um, advertise jobs, if you will, or make jobs available to these guest teachers. And they, and they, uh, they sign up for those jobs on a day-to-day basis. We began piloting with Tag in two thousand, December two thousand eighteen in, at Horizon Middle School. And then over the course of, of about a year, a little more, we increased that, um, that, uh, pilot approach in, in six different schools. So three in the San Creek Zone and three in the Falcon Zone. So the timeline there shows that how we, how we progressed, how, how we added schools along the way. Uh, and, and, and the right side of that arrow, uh, gives you a bit of a preview about the, the recommendation for, uh, how we, how we move forward with Tag. So an overall evaluation of Tag, we, we've gotten some feedback from, both from this, some of the school administrative support, uh, uh, professionals who, who deal with the substitute system, uh, as well as some, some feedback from, uh, building administrators. So we, we're hearing that there, that, that the, the people who, who we source through Tag are, are, are strong. They're, they're high quality. The, the Tag platform itself is quite user-friendly. Uh, Tag is responsive. And there have been, uh, when, when there are planned absences, Tag comes through with a, with a pretty high fill rate. Meaning mo, high percentage of the time they're gonna fill that absence. We continue, we've struggled with, uh, Tag's reporting capabilities. That continues to be an opportunity for improvement. Um, number of technology, uh, issues that Tag has been working to develop and they've, they've, uh, been slow to do that. But they promised us that, that they're on it. Um, they haven't been, has, has strong ability to fill absences on short notice, uh, which is, is probably a pretty common challenge regardless of the platform. And then finally, they don't, they don't have any, uh, the plans to, um, fill support sub roles, meaning, uh, custodial, uh, absences or, uh, or, or secretarial, other support kinds of roles. That means we're gonna, if we were to continue with Tag, we're gonna have to work out of two different systems. I wanna show you a little bit of data. Um, so this is over the course of this year. We really have seen some strong performance overall. When we look at the combined fill rates. The vertical bars give you a sense of how, what person, you know, what proportion of vacancies Tag is filling. So Tag is in the orange. District forty-nine is in the, in the green. So, you know, they're, they're, they're filling a relatively small portion currently. But overall, the performance, uh, in filling those hasn't been that too bad. This, this chart kinda sums that up for you, uh, in a little bit different way to see how out of the total, all the green is filled by frontline, which is our, our regular system. The others are filled by Tag. Overall, a combined fill rate of, of over ninety percent. So I think that's, when I refer back to the, that pay question or how, how, how low we pay relative to the other districts. This nine, this ninety-plus percent fill rate is really pretty, uh, i- is, I think leads our, our competitors. It's only anecdotal. I just hear stories from my, from my colleagues. But they, they talk about fill rates in the seventies and eighties. So, um, I feel pretty, pretty good about, uh, the work that we've done, uh, over this past year and, or in a half. And, and really is the important point here is that Tag is making a difference. If we were to pull Tag out of this, it'd be difficult for us to, to make up the difference, at least, at least in the near term. So the number of concerns we're tracking as we, as we continue to, to work through this pilot. Again, this question of working out of two platforms. So our school staff have to work out of frontline. They have to work out of, out of, uh, Tag. And that is really a drain on their, their productivity there. Time is a precious, precious resource in the schools and, and so that's a serious concern for us. We, you know, it's really hard to see Tag having the ability to scale up to meet the full, uh, meet the district needs in, in total. If we were to think about moving to Tag as a sole solution, it's, it, at this point, hard to see that they could scale up to meet that demand. You know, the market continues to be highly competitive, although I would say we, we continue to perform well in the market. And, and then, uh, finally, you know, we want to ensure that we ta, we retain our current guest teachers. So looking ahead, um, that our plan with Tag is to, to discontinue in the Falcon Zone. So we're gonna pull out of the three schools that have, um, and, and that's in large part because Tag has really had a hard time finding subs who want to work out in Falcon. And we, and we will expand their presence in the San Creek Zone. That means all five schools, uh, by the fall will move to Tag. And I think that'll give us an ability to really look at how Tag performs when it, when it has kinda that whole zone, uh, to call it, you know, a, as it's, uh, as it's, um, set of schools to serve. We, uh, we're gonna be launching a survey to our current subs and just to introduce more ideas about Tag and what it would mean to, if, if we were to, to move to Tag. We know that some, some, some of our subs have said, well, I'd really like to work in both. And that really present, presents a problem from the employment, uh, kind of employment legal perspective. It's hard for us to have somebody working for us as an employee and then separately working for us as a contractor. Um, that there's, uh, it's, that's something that we really have to avoid doing. We're gonna continue, continue to work with that or watch Tags progress on their platform improvements. Um, those are, it's really essential that, that they make good progress on those things. And then finally, we're just gonna continue to, to monitor performance and, um, and evaluate and listen to stakeholders, uh, as we're continuing through this pilot. So I will open it up now for any, uh, questions or discussion.
Paul, this is Kevin. Um, I do have a question. So did I hear correctly that, um, contractors through Tag are employees of Tag and contractors through frontline or employees of the district?
Uh, well, so, so frontline, those are district, district forty-nine employees. So they're not contractors or guest teachers hired by us. And we use, we just use frontline as a platform, uh, as a software platform to manage the absences and, and, and take, um, signing up for, for jobs. Uh, those, those who come to us through Tag are actually independent contractors, um, gig, gig economy workers who associate with Tag. But Tag is not, does not employ them. Um, Tag's association with them is as independent contractors.
So is there a difference in cost per, uh, guest teacher, the district, um, in, in the range of benefits? Or is it pretty, do they make less when they work for Tag? Is there a, a, a pay scale differential?
Uh, so there, there is a, the pay differential isn't really significant right now. In fact, I think we, we, um, all of the Tag subs are set at a hundred and ten dollars. But they don't move up like ours do to the one twenty-five or one fifty when they, when they're here more. Um, so that's just set. Their, um, Tag subs are not eligible for para. District forty-nine subs are. So there's an extra benefit, but there's also an extra cost, um, uh, from our, from our side of things. So, uh, in, in the end, the cost, uh, difference, so speaking of costs, um, uh, to the district, uh, is not significantly different between, um, the, the Tag, Tag supplied subs and the D forty-nine employee subs. Except when we get into the hundred and fifty dollar rate, then I, we, we probably are paying more, our subs more, uh, than we would be paying the Tag subs. So the, the fee, the cost with Tag is, is the hundred and ten dollars in a day plus an upcharge, an administrative charge that we're paying to Tag.
I don't have any more questions. I would, I would propose to move.
I do have a couple of things if it's my turn.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, does Mr. Van Weren and Mr. Costa, are they aware of the, um, conflict of interest, uh, disclosure that we, uh, agreed to as a previous board? I think it's important in this process that they're aware of that.
Not sure what you mean. Yeah, I'm, 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 I subtracted out through Tag. Is that what you're asking me?
No, and, and this is an important part, I think, in regards to our, our work as a board. And so I think it might be something still, again, that we reemphasize, uh, again, as we had passed in a previous board, that two new board members are aware of that. Is that something either Mr. Miller or Mr. Graham would like to address?
Yes, there was a, uh, a potential conflict of interest that was brought to the board's attention concerning Mr., I wanna get this right, so Brad, you're on the line. You wanna speak up, please speak up. But I think, uh, Mr. Miller has a relative that is involved in Tag. And we looked at that as a board and we basically said, okay, we understand where the connection is and we did not consider it a, a conflict of interest. Uh, I think there was consensus on that, but not, it was not unanimous, right Dave?
So, I'm Brad here. Brad Miller speaking. I'm, uh, District Legal Counsel. I'm also a, a significant investor in Tag, so I've got a financial investment in it. And the, the point of the question, and Dave, I appreciate the question, cause I like clarity around this. As a lawyer, I've got to disclose, uh, conflicts between clients. This isn't really prototypically that sort of thing. Um, there is not a technical conflict, um, between, uh, my services as a lawyer and my cer, and my investment in this other organization. But it, in, in order to emphasize the connection and to make sure that the board had clarity, uh, we, we did a formal written disclosure uh, that the board accepted at a meeting last year.
And I think at this time, we will, uh, I will direct Donna to provide that, uh, disclosure information and the actions that the board took to all the board members, just as a reminder. Okay, so she'll get, uh, to that either later this week or early next week. And if the, sorry, my understanding is from Mr. Anderson, is you're giving us an update? We're not actually moving this forward to vote on, or are we?
That's correct. It's, uh, information only.
Okay.
So, I'm, go ahead. I've, I've, I've got a couple of other things and I'm, I, the reason for this is that I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with it in a variety of different ways. Not because of Mr. Miller's involvement. And Brad, thank you for connecting that dots for them and being transparent to our community about that. Uh, your services out as our lawyer, as the district's, uh, attorney is, is still greatly appreciated. So I wanna make that clear, but I think it's important that we, as we move along with Tag, that they're aware of what's going on with that. Uh, with the Falcon Zone, are, are, Paul, are we considering this, excuse me, Mr. Anderson, are we still considering this a pilot project? Is there an end goal or is there, are we still sort of just figuring it out? Or is there some point where we're gonna sort of say, we're gonna lock it in and we're gonna set it and we're gonna, you know, negotiate a full contract for a number of years? Or how's that going to work?
Well, so I, I think, yes, at some point we, our intent would be to lock in something permanent, or not permanent, I'm sorry. But, uh, something more, um, certain and defined, uh, versus, and, and we would stop calling it a pilot. Uh, and I think, I think this shift is moving us in that direction. I think we're, we have learned a lot and, and we, we may find that, uh, this is a, you know, a great fit in the, in the San Creek Zone and, and that's as big as it ought to get. Um, and, and that it, it, what it really ends up being is a, a supplement to our, to our, um, employed, uh, workforce, uh, that, that keeps us, um, you know, performing at a really, really high level, uh, when it comes to, to backfilling with quality guest teachers. And I think we're going, we're, the, you know, the, the, the other thing that is, um, I, I, I talked about our concerns around the platform itself and some of the technology advancements that need to happen. If, if those things don't happen, then I think I'll be coming back and saying, we're done. And because we just can't, i- it's that difficult at times for our school staff and, and we can't continue to have our, 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 uh, you know, our administrative support staff working that hard, making it that difficult for them to do this. So, um, so I think we really are still testing and trying to see, can this platform come along like it needs to, uh, to, 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 so that they'll be a great partner.
And I appreciate that, Paul. Thank you for that because I, I think there's the, the idea of continuing to value our frontline employees, especially the percentage that say they still wanna keep, uh, subs, or excuse me, guest teaching within our district, I think is important because I think there's relationship. I think there's value in that. I think the Tag support, it, it can be there in supplementary ways and, and I think there's a place for it. Uh, yet I'm struggling with, especially, uh, as we relate to the Falcon Zone. I mean, sure, San Creek is closer to the city, whereas Falcon's further away. I mean, is there additional incentive, for instance, for frontline teachers, uh, excuse me, frontline guest teachers to have, um, you know, perhaps do we need to pay more for them to be out there? Because if the Tag experiment in the Falcon Zone did not work, or was not as successful as we had hoped. Is there a way in which we could, um, engage that a little bit differently? I, a, 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 as the, as the, uh, community grows around us, then that might become not as much of a problem. But I, I sense that that's sort of an issue in regards to support of guest teachers in the Falcon Zone.
Yeah, I, I think that you're raising an excellent point and, and I, and some form of different, differentiated pay may be needed, uh, um, to, to, you know, as, if, as we move Tag out of the Falcon Zone, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna have to backfill with our, you know, with our own, uh, guest teaching staff. So we'll have to put some significant emphasis to that. It, it may require looking at some different approaches to, to how we compensate those.
Uh, thank you. I don't mean to be dominating the conversation, but I think it's important, especially with Mr. Costa and Mr. Van Weren being aware of this is, especially as it relates to, I, I appreciate the fact that they're available, guest teachers through Tag are available on a scheduled basis. But it concerns me that they're not available for other things. Does that make sense? They're not available on a kind of an immediate basis. Uh, I see that as a challenge as well. Uh, because many times some of our frontline substitutes wanna know those pre-plans. So would we bypass them and only call on our frontline for those sort of emergency, non-scheduled, um, guest teacher roles?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that's, that's something we'll have to watch and, and be, and be careful, careful about.
And then what do you sense is, is kinda the role or strategy moving forward with incorporating Tag with our other support professionals? Meaning Tag is just teachers solely, or how does that work? Especially, I mean, we've got a lot of, we've got the frontline and the Tag, um, kind of platform working together. But then there's almost to me like a third one where we have the, um, um, the support personnel, uh, uh, substitutes or, or guest personnel.
Yeah, well, so the, um, the, the fact, I mean, it, it is Tags, you know, it's, it's, it's providing support subs won't be a part of the Tag solution. They just don't have an interest in, in that. They are about guest teachers. So, um, whatever our- So, um, whatever our approach is with, with, um, support substitutes, which needs to be an area of emphasis moving forward, uh, will be ours to figure out and, and, um, so it, it'll be, it'll be through frontline and they'll be our employees, I, I, I fully expect. Uh, but more, more, um, input or energy is needed there, uh, to, to improve, to, to improve what we're doing with support subs.
Sure, thank you for that. I, I appreciate the way in which we've approached it, and I, I've heard some quality things about the tag employees, uh, guest teachers who have subbed in, excuse me, guest teachers who have come into the classroom, but at the same time, I'm concerned about the, the balance in that as well. Uh, so I, I think we probably, from my opinion, moving forward as a, as continuing to test and see where we can go with it, uh, but also I think at some point, we're probably going to need to say there needs to be a stopping point to where we move into a more, uh, I won't use the word permanent, but a, 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 a contractual agreement for a number of years or so forth. Thank you.
Sean Costa, got anything?
Um, well, well, Paul, you mentioned that, that schools found it difficult to manage the two systems, um, that's interesting, but, but also I'm curious why twenty-five percent of your guest teachers don't, didn't work a single day in the past year?
You know, I'd say that that's probably not unusual, that we get many people who will sign up with, uh, every intention of, of getting in the classroom and, and then they don't. Um, or, or they start and they just decide it's not for them and, and they don't continue. So it's, it's a question of, it's, it's important, part of question of how long do we keep someone active and try to activate them? Um, and so we usually go through a, um, I think we are twice a year, um, going through our roster and asking them, do you really wish to continue or do you intend to activate? And if not, we will drop them from, um, from the kind of activos of, of guest teachers.
So that number is a pretty typical number on a given year?
Yeah, I really think it is, yeah.
Maybe the better solution here, or just an idea, is to better incentivize our guest teachers so that schools only have to deal with the single system versus going to, which is kind of like a temp agency to augment the guest teacher role. That's just a thought, but I guess that's something that you'll explore.
Yep, that is certainly part of this whole evaluation.
Rick, do you have anything?
I, I do. Um, so again, Brad, I appreciate you kind of clarifying the, the, uh, uh, ownership role, because I was curious as to who kind of was behind tag and what, if there were other relationships involved, so that clarifies things for me a little bit. Um, I wanted to go back to the absences and fill rate, uh, chart that you, uh, showed us, uh, Paul, um, because I want to make sure I'm crystal clear on this. I'm looking at two lines at the top of this chart, one of which I believe is the percentage of success for the frontline, uh, system as far as filling absences, and then the second line, the brown line, being the success rate of the tag system to fill those positions.
That's correct.
Okay, so there wasn't a single month other than December where the two even met. Frontline appeared to have superior results, uh, in all months of this period. So one of my questions is, why are we thinking that we need to just run the same test over in the Sand Creek Zone if we've already got one zone where at a given level, we're clearly seeing that there is, there, that the frontline system, which you have said we can't get rid of, uh, appears to be more effective and, uh, covers a wider range of position, uh, why, why we would actually continue to go forward? Because it seems like the data you've got up to this point, unless there's something I'm missing here, would argue that maybe we've seen enough. And I, I, we're not, we're not saving money, we're not getting more effective, we're adding work to our staff, and, and we're not actually filling as many positions using it as we were with our frontline.
Well, so I'll, I'll, I'll address a couple, those are good questions. First, I would say, if we, when, when tag started out, so one of the reasons why we would not just, um, uh, why we would think that, that they're just not going to get where we need them to be, is that as they started, they started out, so you don't see last year's data here, um, when they began at Horizon Middle School, they were, they were, you know, consistently in the high nineties and, um, really, really strong start at Horizon Middle School. And then, uh, we expanded a bit in the Sand Creek Zone, they were maintaining pretty good levels. Then, then we moved to, we expanded to the, um, Falcon Zone and things really started to fall off when you look at just the total number of absences, or the, the percent of absences that we're filling across the schools that they were then working with. So I, so that's why, I mean, I would say, I think that the, the pulling from the Falcon Zone, uh, is going to give them a chance to, to, to work, uh, to, to, to work the schools where they had, they have had some good success. And so I, I think that, to me, that is a reason to do this. Um, we, the, and then the other thing I would, kind of the broader question about, how are they really helping us? I think if we look at the, the ninety-one point five percent, or the ninety-one point two percent on the next slide, the combined rate, I think without tag, that's probably in the eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven percent, or, or something like that. I, I guess we could, we could do some math and figure that out, but we wouldn't be filling ninety-one percent, I guess is my point. And that is, that's, that is the objective, is the, the higher the fill rate with quality guest teachers, the better off our students are. And so the supplement, having tag as a supplement is helping us achieve a better overall, uh, fill rate.
Okay, to, so, again, to make sure I'm clear on what you're recommending, so you're saying because supplementally it gets us a combined fill rate that's higher, you're recommending we continue to move forward, but probably only as a supplemental system going forward with that?
I think that, I think the, at this point, um, again, pointing out, they're, they're, I, I, it's hard to see tag ever being able to scale up to filling, you know, fifteen, sixteen hundred absences a month. Um, you know, it, it's just hard to see them being able to do that, uh, effectively. So I, but I think as a supplement, uh, I think it could help us have some, some really, um, consistently high levels of fill rates.
Okay. Well, I would be for moving this forward, as the other gentleman have, uh, indicated, with the idea that we're watching this close and, and that we want to be sensitive to whatever we put the staff through to be on two systems, because it, I, it's, it's hard to get good at one system, let alone two, so, but I get it.
We're paying very close attention to what the, uh, the admin support professionals have to say at the schools. So, thank you.
And just so my fellow board members understand, this item is a permission for information only and is not one that we are moving forward. Uh, it was a scaled innovation that we were trying, that's why it started off in one school, went to a couple of schools. They found that the ability to use tag in the Falcon Zone was not ideal, so now they're moving it to a zone that will be completely in one zone to see if it will work better in that zone as a supplement to frontline. Okay, so we'll move on, and we are now with Mr. Anderson again, human resources staffing proposal for ten minutes.
Okay, thank you very much for, for the opportunity to continue here. I want to just begin by providing an overview for, for all of you about what is our core work here in human resources. Um, the, the key things that we do are staffing and onboarding, uh, we work, employee relations, um, lots of compliance kinds of things, and we work heavily with compensation, uh, across all of the workforce segments that are listed, uh, on the left. Um, so we spend lots of our time, uh, uh, onboarding, offboarding, um, sourcing, uh, posting jobs and, and, uh, hiring candidates and so on. Um, lots of our time spent with, with supervisors and other, uh, and principals, working with performance management kinds of things, performing workplace investigations and so on. Um, lots and lots of leaves of absence and, um, uh, kind of some really com- complex compliance sorts of things related to employment law. Uh, and then, again, with compensation, number, a- anything ranging from working with a pay schedule to, to, to working with new job descriptions and how we, what ranges those are going to be placed in and so on. So there's an overview of the kind of work that we, that we spend most of our time on. Some of the trends, uh, here in HR, um, you know, the, 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 the volume of staffing, uh, has just continued to increase. You know, we work, we are in a, just, you know, really, really low unemployment environment, so we experience high turnover and in a number of areas, we, we, um, we, various reasons why we struggle to compete with, or keep, keep, uh, people in certain kinds of roles where there are, there's higher turnover, but all of that just drives a lot of, um, sort of, uh, time intensive, uh, transactions of, of hiring and offboarding and, and processing transfers and so on. Leaves, so, so that's all on the increase. Um, leaves of absence, as we've talked about this, you know, this initiative around, um, mental health and, and, and other things related to our workforce, you know, it's, it's these sorts of things that, that also have, have, uh, you know, the effect of increasing the number of leaves of absence that we're working with and so on. So the health of our workforce is directly, you know, correlated to the, the amount of leave of absence activity. And so that, that, leave of, leaves of absence is not only on the increase, but it just is becoming more complex all the time, with just a whole bunch of new emergency things passed, uh, at the state and federal level in the last, uh, you know, in the last couple of weeks. Um, compensation initiatives, um, have, uh, which are really great, exciting things we've been able to work on, um, are, are, again, just end up being, you know, really ti- time intensive, uh, and co- complex and, um, and then, uh, employee relation, relations issues, uh, lots and lots of that work that is, is on the increase, um, over, over the last several years. We're getting, we're getting very good at employee relations and have built really good processes that, um, that, that keep us compliant, that keep us, help us make decisions that, that, uh, lower, lower the risk to the district. We're doing really good work, but there's a lot of it to do. Um, and then, um, you know, a number of strategic priorities and initiatives that over time have really increased the, the load for, uh, the, the HR leaders or the exempt staff in human resources. So this slide, if you will, is sort of the business case for what I'm, I'm going to, uh, uh, be asking you for. Uh, this one, the, the slide, uh, I showed a couple of years ago when I, when I came asking for a couple of, uh, for a new position, and this just shows the trend, uh, over time and the number of schools and programs that we serve. And any number of departments, communications or culture and services, any, any of our departments could look, could refer to this and say, yeah, that, you know, this is what drives the work that we do. Uh, more schools and programs, um, and, and more diverse schools and programs that, uh, that, uh, drive volume of work. If we look at, you know, human resources, obviously, that the connection to the number of staff is, is a really significant thing, and, um, so we, we look at over time here, the numbers of this is full and part-time staff, we think about our, our workforce seg-, uh, and, and our former, primary workforce segments. In addition to this, we, um, not shown here are, um, work with, so coaches, athletic coaches and other extracurricular kinds of activities, um, uh, work with our, our guest staff, the, the, you know, guest teachers and, and, uh, support substitutes, those aren't listed in here. So tho- those add, you know, something like eight hundred more, uh, individuals, uh, that we, uh, that we support. So I'm coming with a proposal to add, uh, two positions, um, that will add capacity in our department. Um, we have operated for, for some time without an administrative, uh, assistance support in the department, and what that means then is that the things that, um, that get done in departments like, like managing a budget and, or tracking a budget and purchasing things and, um, just sort of the, and, and scheduling of meetings and that kind of thing, get picked up by other people, and so while they're hired to do staffing kinds of work, they're also picking up some of these other things, uh, just to support the department. So my, my hope is to, is to hire an administrative assistant who will support the department and, and kind of consolidate those tasks, and then that'll free up our staffing, our staffing teams in particular to, to be more focused on their, uh, regulars, kind of core staffing duties. Um, there's, there would also assume, that person would also assume some coordination that I'm doing myself or that, uh, the two managers in our department are doing. So I think it would kind of increase the capacity for each of the, each of the leaders in the department. Um, I'd like to add a third human resources manager, so there are two currently in my, uh, on the team here. Um, our, um, the, the work that, that we as the, I guess I'll say the exempt or the leaders in the department, we're, we're the exempt staff, we're, you know, we're not paid by the hour, we're, um, um, we are paid on a salary. So anyway, it, you know, it's us who pick up kind of the extra things, the strategic kinds of activities and priorities, um, and, um, there's a real need, uh, to add more capacity there to lead some key, um, some key projects and initiatives, to, to give more effort, for example, to the, to what we're doing with guest teachers, um, and, or, or substitute, or I'm sorry, our support substitute workforce as an example. So I provided for you the current or organizational chart, um, that's, that is twelve, twelve, uh, individuals, and this is how it's currently structured, um, and really structured by kind of workforce segments, so we, a lot of the, the way that we approach much of the work that we do in our department is, is about how we support workforce segments. In the proposed model, I've had, I show the two additions in, in pink and, um, how we will, uh, divide out the responsibilities within, in the department. I think the, 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 the managers to the left, um, their roles remain pretty, pretty similar to what they are today. The manager, the third one on the right, um, probably is the one that, that opens up a whole lot of new capacity to, um, to, to, to dig into some bigger strategic kinds of projects. Uh, and ultimately, my hope is that it level loads for, for, uh, the, the two, the two other managers and myself, some of the, um, the, the more strategic work that we're trying to do. And some of that work that we would, that we want to get to is, is listed here. So this is not a, this is not an insignificant, insignificant ask. Um, we, I know in my cover sheet, I outlined the, uh, the funding request, you know, it's about, it's about, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, annual increase to the hu- to the HR budget. As of two weeks ago, that looked doable, um, and, uh, and I know that there's probably some uncertainty coming, um, but, uh, this has been vetted through, um, through Ron Springs and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Ridgeway. So I'm going to pause there and see what questions or what kind of discussion there might be about this.
If we can go in order, Mr. Butcher?
Uh, I do not have any questions. I would move it forward.
Person?
Mr. Anderson, I'm curious as to, um, I, I see how the flow chart kind of breaks out. Uh, these are two positions that would become in addition. So I see how the flow chart is, but does it, does, it's more in addition, it's not because there's one subtraction and the two sort of fill the spot or, or, uh, I'm saying that poorly, I apologize. Um, it's kind of, it, it is a revamp, you know, the entire personnel, uh, HR, human resources department, correct?
Yeah, it, so it, it reorganizes this group that you see here into this, so the, um, so the two are, the two are new, are, are truly adds, um, but the, the individuals reporting to that new manager, for example, are just currently reporting under one of the other two managers.
And, yeah, I mean, I, I thank you for noting kind of what, what could be happening or down the road for us as a district within the confines of this particular time. I appreciate that, that recognition, and I, I, I had a conversation when I first came on the board that, you know, our, our human resources department really is going above and beyond, uh, to service so many different parts of our district in terms of personnel, so I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, 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 if you're asking to move it forward, it's kind of hard to do in the midst of this with, with adding two new positions, and we kind of don't know what the picture will look like. So, um, I, I see where we're coming, um, I think that can certainly be helpful, and I, I think the administrative assistant can help alleviate, uh, others to do their jobs a bit better too, so I see that as a positive. Thank you.
Mr. Costa?
Just a general comment, not only these positions, but really kind of on any position we wish to add, um, to the district, I'd like to see the financial impact of such. In other words, I need the finance folks to tell me, yes, we can afford to add these positions on, not only for a short term, but for the next ten years. So when we move, I'm, I'm, I'm forward in moving it forward on the condition that we get that briefing when we go to vote on this. Otherwise, how do we know what we can really afford? So thank you, that's, that's all I got. So thank you, that's, that's all I got.
Mr. Ridgeway, you want to speak up on that one?
Uh, certainly, thank you. Um, yes, uh, this is Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer, and, and, and Mr. Costa, you raise a good point, and, and under ordinary circumstances, I think we would be able to give you more clarity and more assurance when we bring your presentation forward like this. Um, I think what we would do right now, in our current situation, is, uh, as we are putting together a, a twenties, twenty slash twenty-one budget starting July first, uh, the chief, the, uh, the other two chief officers and I will be having to, uh, to make some probably hard recommendations on where, where we will be able to add staff and, and add functions and, and, and costs and where we will be needing to trim, because in all likelihood we're going to see a budget next year that's going to be pretty flat, at least at the beginning, until we get more clarity and as, as we emerge out of the current, uh, situation, uh, to know how our funding is going, going to be able to, um, to be able to support, uh, this district next year. So, uh, we, we did consider even just pulling this presentation off, uh, the agenda here, uh, because of that uncertainty, uh, but, uh, we'd, we'd gone far down the road with developing it and presenting it, and, and, uh, and so I advised, uh, Mr. Anderson to go ahead and make this presentation, uh, just to, to get it in front of your, your eyes and in, 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 in your ears for consideration, uh, as, as, uh, as a, as a particular need, uh, for human resources and for the business office, uh, going forward. So yes, where we actually go with this from here, uh, is probably, is probably a little bit TBD, um, but this is, I think, uh, well established, uh, as, as a, as a valid need, and we would bring that information to you whenever we have a, a more tangible plan, concrete plan for, for actually, uh, extending this, this way.
Mr. Van, where?
Um, I, I have some of, uh, Mr. Custer's, uh, concerns as far as the overall financial picture, and, and quite honestly, right now, I've, I've got a concern for just how it looks when we are looking at adding, uh, central office personnel at a time when we don't know at all how the, um, chips are going to fall from, from the current, uh, current crisis. I did have, uh, another observation though on this chart. I just, by the time we're done, you're actually putting four new names on this chart as opposed to just two. So it looks like we've got some vacancies that result from this, um, uh, this as well. And I just, um, obviously, we're not trying to make more work for you, Mr. Anderson, as far as trying to make bricks without straw, so to speak, and try to get your job done without enough people, uh, but it, it, it would appear at least like, like there's vacancy that results from this.
Uh, let me clarify. So if I, if I look at, if I show you this one, you will see names in those boxes, th- those two individuals have resigned. And so by the time this would have been effective in April, those two would have been gone and vacant. So both of those positions are currently posted, uh, to be backfilled.
Okay, all right. Very, very good. Well, given the, given the financial, uh, concerns, I, I think we could move this forward very cautiously, because, um, I, I know we're going to have a lot of more HR issues that come up as a result of what we're going through, but on the other hand, we're going to have less money in order to, to pay for lots of things, so.
This is Brett Ridgeway again, and yes, I, I appreciate that, 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 because you're expressing the same kind of caution, uh, that I had as well. And so just, I think we just wanted to go ahead and, and, and complete this presentation and see if there was consensus to, to, uh, support this when, when the time comes, and when the time comes is still the TBD.
Okay, so for our listeners in, uh, video land, on our cover sheets, when we say that there's going to be a cost to a position or a program, then not only does the chief officer who is recommending that program or job change, whatever, have to sign off on it, but Mr. Ridgeway also has to sign off on it. So I'm, can't remember what the cover sheet said, but I'm thinking that Mr. Ridgeway did sign off on this. Uh, and in normal times, we would have the money for this, but now we have uncertainty based on economic situation and what the state is ordering or not ordering to do. So what I heard was a general consensus to move this forward to the April ninth meeting.
John, can I interject with a quick question?
Sure.
Thank you, sorry, Dave Cruzon here. Uh, Paul, would this come into a ratio situation, especially with two, uh, central office, uh, positions? Would that be something that affects our ratio at all, or would you be able to provide that to?
Uh, ni- neither of these positions, uh, would show up on the current reporting that we've been doing about, um, administrators? If, if that's what you're referring to? The ratio?
It is, it, it is, yes. And I, I can always appreciate that, because many times our, uh, you know, teachers and so forth kind of look at that and making sure that we're in balance. And I, I, I've seen that before, and I think you know what I'm talking about, where we sort of have that, you know, where we're above or we're below, or right in sort of the mean, uh, where it needs to be. So I was just curious if that's something you could provide us later or somewhere along the line?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, just for clarification, these, these positions are actually not counted in the administration to student ratio, because they're not administrative positions. Um, so we will move this forward, and Mr. Ridgeway, if we are uncertain where the money is coming from for these positions, before April ninth, then we can delay putting it to a vote. And so we'll move this forward. Mr. Anderson, I wanted to thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough, and, uh, I know you and I have talked, uh, numerous times over the years that as the district grows, not only in students, we grow in teachers and support staff, and that also requires HR people, budget people, you know, the people that actually work behind the curtain and make sure everything runs smoothly. So thank you again, and for moving us forward as well.
Thank you all.
Now that I've pressed the right mic button, we are now, uh, we're going to move that forward to the April ninth meeting unless Mr. Ridgeway says he needs more time to determine where the money's going to be coming from. And we're going to go to the Rocky Mountain Classical Academy Armed Security Policy Waiver Request. And that's, uh, Mr. Ameida, and I just, again, request that you stay, stick to the ten minutes. Thank you.
Uh, no, should have no problem with that, barring the questions and discussion that we have from all of you. This is Pedro Almeida, Chief Operations Officer for the district. On the line also is, uh, Dave Watson, hopefully, and, uh, if you have any questions, we'll be able to go back to him as well if you need some further, uh, some further discussion beyond what I present. Um, you have the, uh, you have the supporting documentation inside of your packets, or should say on the board docs packets. I'm going to go ahead and share one portion of the screen, just because I want to show you that I know how to present things on the screen, uh, just for, for no, for no seriousness. What we're dealing with here is the Rocky Mountain Classical Academy has requested a waiver for the purpose of providing armed security on their campus. This waiver is a waiver to the D forty-nine policy that we have established last year. Once we created, uh, armed security positions within the district, we also created a policy that said that the only, uh, the only, uh, authorization for hiring or having someone on a campus with a weapon had to be a D forty-nine authorized employee. Uh, so this requires the charter schools, uh, or anyone that is not, or one of the D forty-nine security employees that we have under the Director of Safety and Security. If we're going to have someone besides someone working for the Director of Safety and Security providing armed security, there's a requirement for a waiver on the part of the charter school to request a waiver for the hiring of those individuals and having those armed security on campus. So Rocky Mountain Classical Academy is seeking a waiver for that policy for this purpose. Uh, what I want to inform the board is that this was a, uh, this has been a process that has been ongoing for the span of the, uh, the last few months. Uh, Rocky Mountain Classical Academy has been working pretty closely along with the Director of Safety and Security, as well as with Andy Franco, uh, with regard to, uh, setting the conditions to make sure that we are holding to a high standard for the hiring of any armed security. Uh, so the main, uh, uh, policy recommendation is listed here on the, on the, uh, in the board packet. I'll bring your attention to the second item that's in the board packet, which I'm showing on the screen now, which is their requirements that they have established to select and hire an armed security representative. Uh, a number of the points that are listed here include passing out background criminal checks, um, meeting the requirements for basic NRA range qualification, remaining peace officer standard training, firearm certification, uh, so basically peace officer training, uh, that's required to include sixteen hours of annual requalification, CPI training, CPR training, uh, psychological exam, as well as maintaining up-to-date, uh, concealed weapon course, uh, uh, license for the representative. Uh, we feel pretty confident that they, uh, that they have established the right guidelines and the process in order to properly screen and hire someone with the, with a high degree of, uh, a high degree of professionalism to perform this duty. So they are sending forward this waiver request, and what is, uh, requested of the board is to review it, to move it on, and then to vote to, uh, to, uh, to approve that waiver at the next board meeting. Any questions?
I have a question, if none of the other board members do.
Go ahead.
Uh, it seems to me that as a district that we could theoretically have a policy that allows the charters to do this without seeking a waiver if they meet or exceed what we're requiring of armed staff, um, in our other schools. And I'm just curious how the rest of the board members might feel about a more global position on this. We don't have to do this seven times, uh, as individual charter schools come up with the, uh, realization that this is something that they want.
I would be for that recommendation with the, I, but I would have to ask Mr. Miller to weigh in on any idea of the, uh, how that would go and how much more liability we would have as a district.
Brad Miller here, legal counsel. Um, yeah, I, I would hesitate on this. I'm, I'm happy to, uh, provide some legal advice maybe through Pedro, um, at a, at a next hearing on this. Uh, it is a fairly complicated scenario, and the, um, the requirements actually would be, um, more complicated than just us giving a waiver. The, the, the plan needs to be presented to us, I think. I think there's more to it than just giving a, a blanket approval, Rick. Uh, with that said, I'm, I'm glad if, if the board wants to provide some insight, uh, through Pedro's office for the next hearing.
When I saw this, the first thing, excuse me, Dave Cruzon here. When I saw this, the first thing I thought of was, goodness sakes, this is unbelievable. That, that, I mean, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the way in which they're going about it in the front end, but boy, on the back end, I'm, I'm with John and with Brad on that. There's some, you know, risk management benefits, things that need to be looked into, uh, before I go anywhere near touching this, uh, even moving it forward, because I think we need to have a clearer understanding of who's responsible, how's it happening, anything like that, if something were to happen with an armed security guard that we signed a waiver off for. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does to me. Uh, I am for moving this forward. This is John Graham. I'm for moving this forward with the caveat that Brad Miller will take a look at this and weigh in at the next board meeting as he suggested. I'd like to see if we can get consensus on directing Brad Miller to, to do that, as well as if we will move this forward.
Um, this is Kevin. I'm, I'm, I am for moving this forward too. I'd also like to have the idea of having further clarification, um, because of liability. I'm probably not inclined to think of a blanket waiver. Uh, I think we should be present at the plan, but I did notice on the chat board, um, Mr. Ridgeway did, um, I think he wanted to comment on this.
Okay, Mr. Ridgeway?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, uh, Mr. Cruzon actually kind of, kind of already, uh, spoke to some of the concerns or thoughts that I have, I should say concerns, but I know when we originally wrote the policy, uh, we, we also wrote in this, this waiver request process just because of the unique and probably high, more heightened risk that comes with, uh, at this type of role, uh, in, 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 in a charter school. You know, when, when, uh, when a charter school gets into a legal situation, uh, with, with one of their parents or, or, or whatever, we are always often named as, as codependents in whatever legal action might come against the charter school, because we are the authorizing entity. So risk that, that presents, um, doesn't go away. And, and, and so the concern, uh, the risk to be managed, I should say, uh, is probably just a little bit heightened with this, and that's why, uh, I would, I would really, uh, advise caution on, on some type of blanket waiver. And, and, and advise also a lot of, a lot of certainty and specificity, like I think we see here, uh, with RMCA, in terms of, uh, uh, every specific request that would come through this, so that we don't just open ourselves up to, uh, to some unintended consequences. Thank you.
Yeah, no, if I can, if I can, uh, follow up on, uh, on Brett's comments, um, uh, I agree with that completely. That was a, uh, that was part of the reason we brought the recommendation for the, uh, policy in the first place. We had this discussion in the first place. This question of, uh, but this is a, this is a unique lane in comparison to a number of other areas that we would probably give, uh, give some direction and blanket, uh, and blanket, uh, conditions for a charter school. Um, uh, what, what we brought to the table when we made the initial recommendation was that, yes, we did want to go the extra mile, and yes, go, we did want to have, uh, a little bit more oversight on this particular topic and, and have the involvement on the district on this kind of a question. Uh, we felt that it was warranted for the, for the, uh, for the reason and the rationale of, of what, of the subject matter. Uh, clearly, we'll follow the board's direction if they want us to go in a different direction, but, uh, that was why we brought that policy forward in that, in that direction in the first place.
I'm fine with the, uh, consensus of the other board members on this, to move this one forward and not to have to, uh, do a blanket policy, if that makes anybody uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Uh, Mr. Costa?
I'm good with moving it forward.
Okay, and I, as well, am, uh, good with moving it forward with proper legal, uh, review. Uh, let me just ask Mr. Ameida, with, uh, can you, can you name the policy again that we're talking about, in case anybody wants to review it?
It is now on the screen. It is policy Echo Charlie Alpha Echo, E C A E, armed security staff on, on school grounds. Uh, and I believe that the loop will work on the, uh, if you're in, if you're in the document itself, I think if you could just load over the link, I think it'll bring you right to it.
Okay, so if anybody has any questions concerning the policy, that is the policy. Uh, we approved that not too long ago, and there was a, uh, portion in there for, um, our charter, uh, schools to ask for waivers, so they can also have armed security staff, uh, to go along with, uh, keeping their kids safe. So, uh, we'll move that to the April ninth meeting, and we'll take it up for a vote then with, uh, proper legal review. Thank you. So now we are on to alternative education campus application renewal and selection measures. Ms. Wettstein?
Good evening. This is Amber Wettstein, Executive Director of Learning Services. Each year, our alternative education campus schools, so Patriot High School and Goal Academy must submit renewal applications to continue their designation as an AEC by assuring that they serve a population of students that is at least ninety percent considered high-risk. You will see the applications for each of these schools in your board docs, along with the proposed measures that the schools are submitting for the twenty-twenty-one school year cycle for accountability purposes. These applications require that the board approve them on an annual basis. Um, so this is just a routine process that we ask the board to support, um, these schools to continue to serve as alternative education campuses. May I answer questions you have regarding this process?
Kevin, do you have any questions?
No, I do not have any questions, and I would move to move this forward, propose.
Hey, Mr., thank you, Kevin. Mr. Cruzon?
Just curious, Amber.
Just curious, Amber, did you see anything that presented a challenge or anything that you see that could trip us up later or could be, not allow us to have that opportunity?
No, this is just a routine renewal application and actually since I submitted them to board docs, some of our timelines for many state accountability processes have been relaxed, but we are prepared to submit them on time and since we had our work session and upcoming board meetings already scheduled, I'd suggest that we move forward as we typically would in this case.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Costa?
I'm a big supporter of the AEC, no questions, moving forward.
And Mr. Van Weren?
David Farrow.
Okay, and I say moving forward. That's going to go on the April 9th regular meeting then. Thank you. And now we are on to another one, United Improvement Planning, School Action Plans. Amber, again?
Okay, so similarly, when I developed this presentation that you'll see in board docs, I'm actually not going to present on screen this evening. I'm not quite as practiced as Pedro and Paul, but I will be for next time. But you will be able to reference the presentation materials in board docs and many of the data that are presented are now somewhat in flux. As you know, that we are not going to be taking our state assessments this school year. So I'm going to emphasize certain parts of the, of the information. For those board members that are newer to the process, it is the obligation of the board to approve our district and our school improvement plans on an annual basis. We typically use these plans to fulfill our state and federal compliance requirements, so things like how we spend our ESA funds and how we comply with the REED Act. We do do other improvement planning in tools such as Invisio and as we continue to work on our local accountability process, you'll see us transition more and more of these action plans in that direction. In your packet, you will see, as I said, the district plan as well as each school's plan and the zone leaders have already been presenting on these actions throughout the school year to you, as well as you've heard about the actions that we in Learning Services and Dr. Lamond in Individualized Education, as well as our Applied and Advanced Learning Team have been working on all throughout the year to support student achievement and student growth. There are targets set in the presentation that we have presented to improve on the state assessments and we plan to carry those targets into the next school year. As I mentioned, we won't have access to those results in the upcoming fall. We have identified three main areas of emphasis in our improvement strategy this year. We are focusing on continuing to build firm foundations for students in literacy and math. We are supporting students with increased options for career and college readiness and we are enhancing training for our staff along with recruiting efforts to ensure a high-quality teaching staff. Many of these actions have already been complete. As I said, we've been presenting these to you throughout the year and we recognize that some in light of our current situation will need to be adjusted for our transition to e-learning. The DAC along with each school's accountability committee has reviewed and approved these plans and so now I'm proposing that the board move these plans to approval in April as we are obligated to do for our public presentation to CDE. What questions may I answer for you?
This is Kevin. I don't have any questions. I would move this, propose we move this forward to the April 9th meeting. Director Van Weren, I would be curious to get any feedback from the DAC presentation.
Amber did an awesome job when she presented this to the DAC and, you know, I'm with you. I think we need to move it forward.
Dave Krusen here? Yep, moving forward. Thank you, Amber. Thanks for all the work.
John Costa?
All right, yes, moving forward.
Okay, and I agree, we'll move it forward to April 9th meeting. Thank you, Amber. Okay, now we're on to policy and procedure review. We've looking at some of these electronic participation school board meetings, drug and alcohol testing for commercial drivers, student conduct on buses, use of vehicles on district business, hiring of instructional staff, portability of non-provationalary status, administrative staff assignments and transfers, evaluation of licensed personnel, resignation of instructional staff, administrative staff, discipline suspension and dismissal of professional staff, student conduct on buses, again, a dash R, and physical activity. So does anybody have any questions on any of those policies? Can you speak up now and then let me know whether you want to move them forward or not?
This is Kevin. I, this is Kevin, I have no additional questions and would move them forward.
This is Dave. I also have no additional questions and I say move it forward.
This is Rick. I move it forward.
Mr. Costa?
John, moving forward.
Okay, and I agree, so we're going to move that forward to April 9th. And we're on to charter school amended budgets for 10 minutes. Mr. Sprens?
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprens, Director of Finance. If you remember, back in January, when we presented our amended budget for the district and we had three other charter schools present their budgets, but we were missing three from that presentation. They have since submitted their budgets and we have them to present tonight. I really haven't, really nothing to say about it other than technically these are their amended budgets, but since we've missed the deadline, these would be technically a supplemental budget approval at the next meeting. We, just for your information, we have, see if I can share my screen here. Contacted or connected with the, with the charter schools and we're working with them to get on an annual process for submitting their data on time and getting it to us in a manner where we can review and ask questions and have them submit something final so that we don't miss these deadlines in the future. But that's all I have. Any questions?
This is Kevin. I don't have any questions and I would recommend moving forward.
Thanks for, this is Dave. I appreciate your persistence, Ron, of working on this and I certainly think that we could advocate a little bit strongly that they need to comply with our, our deadlines as well so that we are not behind or, yeah.
Mr. Costa?
Yep, I'm okay and I move it forward.
Rick?
I'm okay, I move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sprens, wasn't it four schools?
I believe four had, had presented and we were missing three.
Okay, Roger, we're going to move this forward to the April 9th meeting and now we're on to the 2021 budget preview, which, so Mr. Sprens?
Thank you.
I've been over for 10 minutes.
Ron Sprens, Director of Finance, really, you know, the, all I wanted to tell you now is that we really don't have a lot of idea of what's, what's happening with next year's budget. So pretty much everything I've presented up until now, we need to put on hold. I haven't heard a lot of information. The information I have heard was that, you know, at best we could be flat to this year's budget and, and with the possibility of, with the constraints on the state budget that, to get that state budget to balance, they would have to adjust the negative factor or what they like to call the budget stabilization factor. They would have to adjust that up, thus decreasing our per pupil revenue. So right now, we've, we've put out some communication to not put any new hires in for next year to, to be patient and to hold until we have better information. I'm attending, FPP meeting is Financial Policy and Procedures Meeting tomorrow morning where there, a lot of this information is to be given. Hopefully, I don't know how clear they're going to be or how much information they're going to have to give, but hopefully we'll learn a little bit more then. And so I will just continue to try to gather that information. We're going to still move forward with budget, but pretty much right now with the knowledge that, that we're just going to be flat to this year. Brett, is there anything you want to add?
Yes, thanks, Ron. I would, I would just kind of reemphasize the uncertainty that really we have now, which is, which is different than anything we've ever experienced before. I mean, the state legislature is actually out of session, of course, so now is the time when they would normally be working on the budget. When I listened in to a call that the governor had put out last Friday just to talk in general about updating education, while he had a positive of mentioning that he didn't expect any recisions to come this year to the 1920 activity, which is good, he gave every indication that the previous communications or expectations about increases in PPR were likely not to come to fruition and that there could actually be a reduction to PPR next year from this year by increasing the budget stabilization factor. So, and with the, with the session again not, still in recess and uncertain when it's going to come back on, we really are going to be in a, in a complete time of uncertainty in terms of budget next year and that's why our only option really is to try and budget something flat in terms of the total budget for, for, for next year to start out with in terms of where we're starting, where we are this year. So, and that means, that has the repercussions of what do we do at new positions as we were talking about with HR today and even the other positions in Applied and Advanced Learning as well. There's just, there's so much uncertainty that pretty much any ad we would need, we would most actually pursue would need a corresponding offset in terms of reduction in order to fit within a flat budget at this point. That means that, that pay raises and such, again, completely unknown. We wouldn't be proposing any changes to pay schedules like we normally would be during April and we're just moving forward with kind of business as is currently, literally right now and then, and then as we learn more, bringing, bringing those impacts to you and what recommendations we would have to how to reflect those in our budget.
That pretty much sums it up. Does, does anyone have any questions? I'm sure there's tons out there. We've got tons of questions too that we keep asking, but if there's something that you'd like us to try to find more clarification on, please let me know.
Hey, Ron, did you ask a question? So two meetings ago, I think it was, you briefed about like a, I'm guessing here, like a $2.5 million surplus you were forecasting for the upcoming year and you proposed ways to spend it and I think I asked you to take a cautious approach because we didn't know if it was locked in and here we are now faced with that exact scenario. So did we allocate that $2.5 million or whatever it was? Okay, good.
Absolutely, absolutely not. No, 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 that was just a preliminary budget talk. I usually start the year off like that and just, just with this is potentially what we can do. So no, nothing has been allocated, nothing has been set. And now that we know that we are in the predicament that we're in, yeah, we're backing off of those initial comments.
Okay, and what would be helpful for me, not tonight, but maybe at our next meeting, if someone could present just a short explanation of how the budget can, the per child obligation from the state actually can change depending on the budget. I didn't realize that was a possibility. I thought a per child obligation was a fixed amount. So if we could, if we could get a little bit about that maybe at our next meeting, that'd be helpful for me because I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, you bet. It has to do with what Brett referred to or what I referred you earlier called the negative factor or budget stabilization factor. But yes, I will put together something that would help explain that a little better at the, at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Ron, I think is the fact that the state has to have a balanced budget and isn't allowed to have a deficit spending, does that have a lot to do with why our amounts can actually go down?
Yes. Yeah, and so the biggest lever they have really, since we're, one of the biggest pieces apply us and I think Medicaid, we have this, this, this thing built into the budget called the negative factor that they can, they can raise and lower to help the state balance their budget.
Any other questions?
No, this is Dave. No, I do not.
Rick Van Weren? I consider that good and then we'll move on to the monthly financial update. Mr. Sprens again, 10 minutes.
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprens, Director of Finance, again presenting our monthly financial package. Have a new individual, Scott Trapp, continuing to work on this and if you're looking through this, you can see it has the same look and feel as, as the previous reports. However, it's starting to get some of his flavor of how he likes to design some stuff, which is pretty neat. I'm going to try to present a window here. It, it's telling me it's presenting. Can everyone see that page? Give me a thumbs up, maybe? Yes, good. Okay, so this is the. Say it again, John?
Yes, we can see it. Mr. Sprens is now sharing the screen and broadcasting the financial update.
Awesome. So this, I think, I believe this is page 36 if anyone's looking at it from the, the board docs presentation. I had asked Scott last month, I said, you know, still looking good. I think we can make some changes to this and I said, one of the things I'd like to see, especially for Fund 10, is a, is a full summary page, kind of what, like what it looks like as you go down. You can see the Falcon Zone, the Sand Creek Zone. This is a one-page look at all the zones. So he turned this around in one month, so really, really happy with how this looks. So you can look over to the side or you can see the different colors and the zones here on the left and then if you look over here to the right, you can see where we're at to this point of the year. So we're three quarter, or what are we, it says up here, I'm sure, 66 or 67% through the year and, and we're, we're, we've only spent 66% of the budget, which is great. So right now we're running at 500K lower than expectations to this point. So anyways, just really happy with, with how, how the department has taken to this report and is starting to put their different, different touches to it. So other than that, if anyone doesn't have any questions, this is our financial report for the year. We're looking, we're in a good position right now.
Any discussion, Kevin?
No, thank you.
Dave?
No, thank you.
John Costa?
Uh, no.
Rick Van Weren?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sprens.
Yeah, thank you, Board.
Okay, you have a good night. We're going to move on to the monthly chief education officer. We're going to move on to the monthly chief education officer report, Mr. Peter Hills.
I do not have anything to add on top of this report. We are obviously working intensely to accommodate the transition to what we call E49, which is district operations during this time of the health emergency. We're getting information at least daily, often within the day, and we have to make adjustments to that information, such as the governor's order tonight to shelter in place. So that is really dominating our work. It's dominating our thinking and collaboration, but we have fantastic people all over the district doing great work. And so I'm confident that E49 is going to be just as good as D49, and it's going to help us develop some skills and approaches to learning that will serve our students and our district well, well beyond this coronavirus crisis. So we will find some, some good in this very difficult, anxious time.
Thank you, Mr. Hills. Do we have any comments from the board members?
No.
Dave Krusen here. I do want to say thanks for the adjusting on the fly. Many of the teachers that I know who are working within the district are, you know, kind of wanting to get back in the groove and at the same time, they're finding a way to do it in this way. Really appreciate the work of our teachers and administrators on the education side to make this happen and the optimistic flavor with which I'm seeing it and hearing it. My kids have already received an email from their teachers and while they're already on an iPad team through the middle school, I really appreciate the way in which the district is trying to accommodate families in situations that learning can still continue, albeit in a new territory and a new world that we haven't experienced before, but I really appreciate it.
Any other board members? I'll take that as silence is consent to move on. I did want to say, Peter, that I looked at the plan that you sent out to the parents concerning what I used to call distance learning, but it's, you know, internet learning and stuff like that. I think it's a good plan. You guys are working hard at it. I know it's going well. One thing I'd like all our chief officers to keep in mind, and with the shelter in place, how does that affect? The question was asked, I don't know if you saw it, but how does that affect our employees that come in occasionally right now, such as myself? I'm here and Donna's here at the office to make sure this meeting worked. So we'll have to make sure that we do address that to all employees. And I know it just happened, so, you know, we got to give it more thought. Okay, now we're on to the chief business officer.
Thank you. This is Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. And as I look at the, what I submitted for the business officer report for this month, I now see that I, one of the pages is duplicated in there. That means I, there's one page that didn't get put in unfortunately, which I think would have been the purchasing and contracts page. You know, the information that we present here, of course, is still important to the normal ongoing operations of the district, but at this moment in time, it still does kind of pale in comparison to the issues de jour that we had with the virus and the request for closure and shelters in place and things like that. But we are continuing to work and serve in the roles that we need to in the business office. Every person in the business office is able to continue their work remotely and do an e-work scenario. And we're doing our best to make sure that, you know, all the business is taken care of, vendors are paid, employees will be paid, et cetera, cash will be managed appropriately and things like that. So thank you, just, I appreciate and admire all the leadership that's happening out there, especially from my colleagues from Peter and Pedro, the work that they're doing. Really appreciate it and proud to serve with them.
Okay, please feel free to get that lost page into Donna for the record. And anybody have any additional questions? Mr. Almeida, it's Chief Operations Officer time.
So the Pedro Almeida, Chief Operations Officer, is reflecting both again what Peter and Brett have mentioned with regard to the coronavirus and the impact it's having across the district. Interesting, as we look at the big picture, the initial phases of this really required a tremendous amount of surging on the operations side and the emphasis and the profile is definitely going to switch to the education officer side now that we're coming out of spring break and teachers are going to be teaching again. But rest assured that across the district, all the support personnel, a lot of support personnel have been doing a lot of great work over the span of the last couple of weeks. I'll highlight a couple of those here. In the Facilities Department, the leadership of the Facilities Team, working with the custodial staffs at all of the schools and all of the buildings across the district, have been working to disinfect and to clean the schools, ordering supplies, keeping track of how much supplies and on-hand equipment that we have, PPE, providing guidance from the state, passing that on and giving some clarity on process and procedures after we went through something that was very unexpected during spring break. On the nutrition services side, probably the most essential and consequential work over the span of the last couple of weeks was standing up the free meal program. You'll see in the update, we had 83 students on day two. Today, there were 450. The number has continued to grow almost every single day as we are now operating out of three locations. We started off with just one location, but now we're operating out of Evans, Odyssey, and Falcon Alley as we are, and so the numbers are growing up at each of these locations every single day. A number of volunteers from across the, a number of, not volunteers, but I would say surge workforce across the district stepped up to assist in cleaning and working with the custodial staffs where needed as we look across the board. Work with IT to go ahead and bring folks on and safety and security, of course, continuing to work with local law enforcement, plug into local emergency services. So a lot of good work that they have done over the span of the last couple of weeks. Peter mentioned the new, the new order that just came out about stay at home and we are continuing to assess that. We had a meeting just before this session with the chief officers to talk about what of these functions that were going on are still mission critical from our perspective. And we certainly, at the top of that list obviously is the food service program, which we fully intend to continue as an essential service here within the district. And a couple of other things that will also take place. I remember those other functions are going to continue to ramp down and send back by home in a little more time. Any new questions? That's all we have and we'll continue to adjust to whatever the requirements are.
Mr. Graham, let me supplement what Mr. Almeida just said. As we're sitting here, I just got, I just got a message from the Commissioner of Education a moment ago, and so I'm going to just read this into the record. She said that education is considered an essential service and so the travel is permitted, including for receiving materials for distance learning, for receiving meals, and any other related services from educational institutions. And so although that was not in the governor's order, it is in the commissioner's explanation of the governor's order. And so we will implement that guidance, share it broadly tonight so that folks know that we're going to keep on providing those essential services.
Great, thank you for sharing that. I want to make sure that even though there's not a lot of public participation at this time, that myself, as president of the board, and maybe even on behalf of the board, but also more importantly, as a community member, want to thank all of D49 for all the efforts they're putting in to help the community through everything that we're going through. People are worried about their kids, they're worried about their education, they're worried about college applications and graduation and where we go from here and all that other stuff. And I think that all three chief officers and their teams are putting forth all that extra effort to make this a easier time, even though it's a hardship on many, many people. But it, you know, they don't have to worry as much because of the efforts that you and your teams are putting through. So I want, as a member of the community, want to say thank you to all of you and D49 staff and then the teachers when they come back online for getting that e-learning going and everything else that will help all of our children in our communities. And so this also brings me up to my next point, and I know there will be time for other board members to ask questions. I know we have a continuity, continuity, continuity of operations plan, and that's called COOP, C-O-O-P. And I know you adjusted it off and you sent it to me. And this is really a time for us to capture whatever processes and procedures need to be updated, lessons learned, so, because we're going through this real time. And so no better way, no better reason to than this to update our plans. So I hope that continues and I hope all your efforts and make sure you are taking care of yourselves, being safe and being well. Do any board members have anything?
David Krusen here. Sorry, Kevin, go.
Yeah, I was just, I would like to also compliment our team in District 49 and really express my appreciation for all the hard work they're doing. And John, I'd like to add you to that. You've carried more of a burden than the other members. So thank you much and appreciate all that everybody's doing. And again, stay healthy.
Dave Krusen here. I do want to say thank you to our communications team and Peter and the other chiefs as well for continuing to keep the flow of information going to all of us on a broad spectrum. I appreciated the video series that Amy did of the cleaning at Vista Ridge, for instance. That was fantastic to show our community, hey, this is what we're doing. That was sort of before everything sort of fell into further along the process. But also thanks to Nutrition Services and their team for continuing to provide meals to our children and our families who need that. That's a fantastic thing to do. And of course, all of the other staff people that are going above and beyond. We know it's a weird time for everybody, but on behalf of volunteers in the community, John, I'm right with you, Mr. Graham. I appreciate what everybody's doing. So thank you and please keep it up as best you can and take care of yourself.
And this is John, President for what you're doing and to our chief officers, excellent work. Pedro, maybe you already know the answer to this, but as we shove all these kids in to get these lunches, are we like doing curbside delivery or are we preventing groups of kids getting together for lunches? One and two, I'm curious, if you've already hired or if you have not already hired your armed security guards, do we think of that as critical or something to relook at if our budget crisis is going to be as impacting as some of you are suggesting?
Both of those questions. First of all, with regard to the feeding of the students, absolutely, it's grab and go. It's sack lunching along with a breakfast piece for the next morning. And what happens is our Nutrition Services Team are wearing gloves and they will just hand it, people drive up, they hand it off to them and they drive right out. There's very little contact, very much within the norms of a safe operation. They don't need to be all dressed up in PPE like medical health, health folks to get them what to function. So we're doing that very deliberately. With regard to the, with regard to the hires, those folks had already been hired before we got to any kind of point of restrictions. They're already halfway through their training process with regard to the armed guards. And we also had a very deliberate discussion about the need for us to continue to have the increased security across the district because one of my areas of concern is as we go into the next couple of months and we have, or at least certainly the next few weeks, possibly the next couple of months, depending on how long this goes on, if we have no one that's in the process of providing security on our campuses, at least on a presence type basis, rotating basis, I have concern over what kind of, what kind of damage we may see in our facilities over time. And we want to make sure we're keeping an eye on that for any kind of potential of either vagrants, transparence, any kind of, any kind of like, just kids acting up and we want to make sure that we have a presence on the campus. Otherwise, we'll be totally empty. And we'll probably.
Yeah, this is Brett Ridgeway. I'd like to respond to that as well if I could, because we have already seen vandalism in the schools. And so having, having the increased security, still patrolling and watching out for buildings that might otherwise be largely vacant will be important. But a final clarification is that the funding used to hire those is all coming from override funding. So having them onboard or not more does not impact our general fund budget concerns either way.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. And thanks for the work you're doing, Pedro. Excellent work.
Rick, you got anything else to add?
I think they all said it all. You guys, you guys are nailing it. I just appreciate very much how planful, thoughtful, steady the district has been through all this and I absolutely am in awe of what you guys have done so far.
Thank you. Okay, so the work session is ended at 8:35 PM. The next special meeting, which is by invitation, is at 8:40 PM and that will be a different invitation than the meeting we are in now. Okay, so I should give everybody time to do what they need to do and log back.
Okay, so...
To return to regular session?
That is the motion, Dave?
Seconded.
I have your motion seconded. Any discussion? Vote? Kevin?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Koster?
Aye.
Van Weren?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
The board returned to regular session at 9:40. Okay, so now we can discuss potential board actions. Action relating to board direction to administration regarding any specific actions that may be necessitated in response to state federal declarations and or contractual matters. This is where we would make a motion and a second to direct the administration to follow any, to continue looking at the courses of actions that they are looking at and adding any additional courses of action like possible legislative liaison action. And I can also talk to CASB about their legislative efforts to get schools a little bit of relief because they are large employers as well. Okay, we didn't discuss this, but is there a motion, to make a motion such as, I move to direct the administration to continue planning for response to state and federal declarations or contractual matters and brief those at the April 9 meeting?
I so move.
The way he said it, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do I have any discussion? Administration, let you guys go first. Do you understand the direction?
I understand the direction and I don't believe I need any more clarifications. I had nothing, nothing else to add, no. Thank you.
You know, also, as a thought, you know, it doesn't have to be one option or another option. It can, we can even consider combining a little bit of some options, whatever makes sense. Now, I know that there was some concern about us being a very large employer and how that has a domino effect on the local economy. So that is also up for, you know, for board members to consider when they're thinking of which direction they want to go. Does any board members have anything to add?
No, I just want to comment that we need to get our chief officers a lot of leeway to guide us through. These are uncharted waters, waters none of us have ever been on unless somebody was alive when Spanish flu hit. And so we're going to have to be creative and there's a lot of information we don't have to make a good decision right now. So just Godspeed to y'all. I second, I vote yes if you're voting.
Okay, so now we are just on comments. If there's no other comments, if there is another comment, speak up right now because we're going to a vote.
I would like to make one extra comment. I would like to encourage the administration as they do investigate all this stuff, that they give strong weight to the, the value of, of perception in some of these things, both in the minds of our constituents as well as in the, in the minds of our employees in that we are looking at, at the big picture and the long-term, not just the short-term crisis that we're in.
Okay. You have my trust.
So what I'm hearing is we're basically...
So what, what I'm hearing is we're basically saying, uh, to the administration that we value all people. That is important to the board. And that, uh, there may be a short-term decision to make and then a longer-term decision to make based on what information is presented as it's presented by state and federal officials. Okay. So let's go to the vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Costa?
Aye.
Ben Wiern?
Aye.
Graham? Aye. So the motion carries and, uh, the administration is duly, uh, directed. And then we are, if there's, uh, we're on to adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second, sorry.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. The time is ten, uh, nine forty-five. Uh, let's have a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Graham, aye. Costa?
Aye.
Ben Wiern?
Aye.
Okay. So we are adjourned at nine forty-five. Thank you, gentlemen, and, uh, be safe out there and your families too.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate, appreciate it. Thank you.
Stay safe and healthy.
Bye.
Thanks.